The West Bridgewater School Committee Meeting on March 2, 2021. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. And a moment of silence? Thank you. In accordance with the Governor's order, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, relating to the coronavirus outbreak emergency, this meeting is physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, the meeting is live on Comcast Channel 9 and will be replayed on both local cable channels 9 and 98 and will be available later online as well. If any member of the public wishes to comment during tonight's meeting, they may do so during the public comment portion. Please note, we will only be able to hear the public during that time. And now, under Business, the reopening plan, Mr. Bodwell. Oh, Mr. Bodwell, maybe one more provision. I apologize. The listing of matters of those recently anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Thank you. Mr. Bodwell?
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. All these slides too, for the people who are listening in. I'll put them up on our website tomorrow so people can see all the information that's presented, both for the return to school and the budget information. I think as we go on, we've continued to have priorities for reopening. We've always said health and safety has been our number one. It will maintain being our number one priority. The social and emotional well-being of our students, obviously, the education of our students and the continued making connections with our students during this time when all the students are not back in school. You know, we continue to meet, myself and Mr. Flynn and Mrs. Sullivan continue to meet with the WBEA leadership to create a plan to return to school. These meetings have been productive. They've been ongoing throughout the whole year. We've actually had three meetings within the last month to talk about reopening. And the goal, our goal really is to work with the union to come up with a plan that we can get our students back to school as soon as possible with the safety of all in mind. A lot's been happening in the news lately. It seems like literally every time you turn on the news, something changes, which is good. I think we're moving in the right direction. So it's positive whether information is coming from DESI, Governor Baker, President Biden. Information is flowing throughout the day. But more recently, Commissioner Riley announced about a week ago that he's working with the Board of Education for a vote upcoming to have all elementary students come back into school full-time starting in April. Again, that's got to go to the Board of Education for a vote. Middle and high school students will follow, and he did not set any dates. As part of Commissioner Riley's talking, he said that as of April, the hybrid learning will no longer count. That's his recommendation to the Board of Education towards the time on learning requirement. So without that, you know, having kids learning at home, they'll have to be either all in school or they'll be fully remote. So there will still be a fully remote option from now through the end of the year. And we've talked with our school committee, our school doctor, our Board of Health and DESI, and they all support a full return to school. And I know our educators do as well. So that's part of what we're working through with them. I want to provide a little bit of information again, some of the recent updates from our Governor. Governor Baker announced last week that as of yesterday, we moved into Phase 3 with some provisions in terms of opening up venues, indoor recreational spaces, capacity limits raised in restaurants, and so forth. So that's now Phase 3. And on March 22, we'll move into Phase 4. Our goal in the schools is to continue this reopening as the state is. So we feel it's important to kind of mirror what the state's doing. Reopening the state, reopening the schools, we feel is very important. And we know that, you know, I'll talk about it in a minute, that our transmission rates in the schools is low and has remained low for a period of time. What do the numbers look like? Our school numbers, positive cases are down and have remained down over the past month. I'll have a slide in a minute that you can visually see that, as well as the state numbers. And again, the Governor's taking the state numbers, looking at those, and that's why he's moving forward with his reopening plan. This is just a kind of, it's the same one I showed at our meeting on February 8 that shows the number of students and staff in each of the buildings. So the total is as of yesterday, we have 116 total cases from September 16 through March 1. And just some data in terms of more recent transmissions in school with our students and staff that over the past 24 days, we've had an additional 15 cases, 14 students and one staff. So the numbers are there. I mean, students and staff are still testing positive, but they seem to be going down, and they have been going down and they're staying down. The next one just shows the same graph that I showed at our last meeting. It's difficult to see here, but it does stretch all the way from September 16 to the present. You will see that the bars on the side go are in increments of 1 with a spike around. I think that's right around, right after New Year's, where we had a maximum of 7. But often they're, you know, 0 to 2, ranging in that. So some days, we go a couple of days without, you know, 0, and we may have 1 or 2. But the numbers have been pretty consistently low in the schools. At the last school committee meeting, I reported out the survey results from our families. And they overwhelmingly supported more in-person learning time. They supported students in school 4 to 5 days a week, and they supported students being in school at 3 to 4 feet of distance, where we're at the 6 now. Again, all that information was shared. Ian is on our website. So anyone wants to go back and look at the survey data, it's all available there. In terms of who's supporting this, we know that our school committee supports it, Department of Education, Governor Baker, the American Academy of Pediatrics. CDC has said that although 6 feet is preferable, they are saying students can be back at the 3 feet. Our Board of Health agent supports it. Our West Bridgewater School physician, Dr. Murphy, and local districts have or are planning for a full in-person return under the 6 feet. Not all, but there are a lot of area schools that are moving towards getting kids back or have moved in that direction. This is just a list of some of the area schools. On the left, districts that are back, and this is not K to 12 back. The grade levels vary. In some cases, it may be kindergarten, could be K to 3, it could be K to 5. But they are back in some form or fashion, and other districts are planning on return. And when I say planning on return, I'm simply saying that they're putting out dates. They're having these discussions with their administrators, with their teachers, and with their families. And again, part of this, I think, is we need to have these discussions now because the longer we wait to have discussions like this, the more it's going to delay once we're ready to go back. There's going to be a lot of work to be done to return to school. There's a lot of work the administrators have to do, the teachers have to do, and the families need to be prepared. So that's why we feel it's prudent to really start having these discussions and what it's going to look like when we reopen because the state is moving in that direction. Why do we need our students back full-time? We've talked about it many times. The social and emotional health of our students is at risk. It's, you know, it's tough for these kids to be at home, especially our younger kids to be learning remotely. Fortunately, we've had, you know, a number of students that are in Cohort C, so they're in 4 days a week. But we have still, the majority of our students are either in Cohort A or in Cohort B. Gaps have developed, and that's everywhere due to the nature of them not being in school full-time. So the sooner we can get them back, and honestly, one day counts. And so if we get kids back into school, it's going to be better for our kids. And like I said, a majority of our students are in that one cohort group. And today is right around day 100. This was done a couple of days ago. But for a majority of our kids, they've only been in person 38 to 40 days all year. And that's tough. I think we all acknowledge that. We all want them back. There's an added stress on the families. There's financial stress. There's a social and emotional stress for these students being at home. Parents are choosing to stay home with their kids rather than to work. They're making concessions to do what's best for their kids, and we really appreciate that. This has been tough on everyone. It's been tough on our kids. It's been tough on our staff, and it's been tough on our families. We need them back because we need to make those connections with students. We've been fortunate to have our seniors back or the ones who've wanted to come back. I think that's a great thing to get them back into the building. But they're missing those day-to-day connections with the people they care most about, and that's our teachers. We've got great teachers. We've got teachers who care deeply about their students. They're their kids. So we're going to make those connections better by having them in school every single day. Also, the feeling of school community. It's tough to have, you know, a school community when a child is only in school twice a week. It's very difficult for them. And we're going on a year now, just under a year. We need to return to normal. The time is coming up, the time is soon, to really get back to what is normal and again, what's best for our kids. Some of the concerns we have when planning, and these are legitimate concerns, is, you know, getting our educators vaccinated. That's a major concern. It's not just in West Bridgewater. It's across the state. It's across the country. Our state needs to do a better job. They seem to be moving in that direction. But other states have moved faster than we have in getting their educators vaccinated. And Massachusetts is a leader. We should be a leader in this. So hopefully, they're listening to the educators, to the legislature, to parents, you know, that says we need to prioritize our educators because not only is it best for kids, it's best for the economy. It's best for everyone. We have a lot of plans to do, like I said, for modifications and procedures and protocols in all the schools. It's going to be, take a lot of work to get them back in and changing classrooms around, changing routines around that have been established. Procedures that have to be worked out because we're still maintaining the 6 feet when they're eating. So that's a lot of work that has to be done. And they've lessened the social distancing distance on buses, but we still have drop-off and pickup. I mean, I know you go to the elementary schools, and I've seen it. It's pretty crowded now because people are transporting their kids to school rather than taking the bus. So that's going to add a delay in terms of getting kids into school and getting them picked up in the afternoon. I talked about lunch to maintain the remote learning model for the remainder of this year. That's going to take some work. It's going to look different at the elementary level than it does at the secondary level. So we're going to need time to work with the fully remote teachers and with our teachers here at the middle, senior, high schools. So what is that exactly going to look like? Again, it's going to take some time. And we do know that if we are under the 6 feet, if a student does test positive, and there will be students testing positive, that we will more than likely have an increased number of close contacts within the school. Okay. But again, the hope is the numbers continue to go down. The number of close contacts we've had is low mainly because we have, these kids have been out of school and haven't been a close contact with other people. What are our next steps? I've scheduled tomorrow at 12:30 with Dr. Murphy, our school physician, Rob Casper, our Board of Health representative, and Julie Dietrichson, our lead nurse, to once again have a roundtable discussion, which we had back in September when we opened up school. I thought it was a great job by all of those presenters. They answered questions by the educators. They gave information. Just again, we want to be, have an open discussion about returning to school, what it's going to look like, and hopefully alleviate some fears that people may have. So that's going to happen tomorrow. We're going to continue to review all relevant data in terms of how students are doing, common assessments, looking at eye-ready to see how students are progressing because again, we know that there are going to be learning gaps. We're going to have ongoing meetings with the WBEA and our educators to plan for reopening. I think the next logical steps is, once we've kind of made a decision on where we're moving and when we're moving, is to not have the administrators solely or the, myself and the school committee talk to our representatives, but have the principals meet with their teachers to say, what's going to work? How's this going to work? What concerns do we have? What issues are we going to have so we can move forward? I've already committed to meet with the Roselle faculty, I think on Monday, to answer any questions that they may have. And I'll certainly be open to meeting with all other faculties at their staff meetings. And then we have our next school committee meeting on March 8. So next Monday, we meet. So we'll have an update on where we're going or what some movement we've had. In talking about a timeline, we're hoping to move our elementary students back into school sometime in March, sometime this month. And if we can get the vaccination or we can move forward with planning for it. I remember our teachers will still maintain the 6 feet of distance. So nothing will change for our educators. It's our students that will be less than 6 feet. So what they're doing now, again, there'll be more students in most of the classes, we assume, but that their social distancing won't change from what it has been for this year. Our secondary, similar to the state, we don't have a date yet. We have more pride to work on with our grade 7 to 12 students. We have to look at the learning models which differ than the elementary. We, again, we're looking at the hybrid learning model going away. So parents will need to make that decision. Are they going to send their child into school full-time or are they going to go fully remote? With that being said, if they are fully remote, it's only going to be through the end of the year. And we're also going to be talking with those families. While the administrators talk to them to gather more information on why do they need to stay remote? So we'll find out what the reasons are and could we support them in school? Because again, we, I think everyone understands and believes that in-person learning is the best for all of our kids. And just kind of to sum it up, I mean, our schools have an excellent reputation for academic and educational excellence. Our educators and staff continue to go above and beyond expectations, provide our students with amazing educational experience. And it's our goal to work with the educators to come up with a plan to get our students back as soon as possible. Again, while maintaining the safety of all. But I think it's time that we really continue to move forward. The state's moving forward. As you saw, other districts have moved forward without vaccines to get kids in under 6 feet full-time. So we want to work with them to see what we can do to get that going. So I think it's going to be a real happy day for everyone when these kids come back full-time and we get back to being normal. So that's the update. Again, I'll provide more information next week. But if there's any questions or concerns about the return to school, I'm certainly be able to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Bodwell. There was a lot to digest. So thank you for that concise presentation. There's a lot to consider. So we understand that everybody is working towards that goal. So we appreciate that. Next, under Business, is the fiscal year '22 budget.
No break with questions. I got to go right back into this. I was just, you know, hoping for a little question and answer time, but no, I'm good.
Mr. Bodwell, should I do, should I take that moment for a public comment?
If you would, too. I'm certainly, you know, that way if people are on for that, they have any specific questions, we can do our best to answer them.
So for those that have called in, this is a public comment section with regard to Mr. Bodwell's reopening plan. If you have any comments at this time with specific reference to that plan, then we would appreciate your calling in. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Now, it is my understanding as well, if you're calling in, that you are put automatically on mute. It's, again, my understanding according to our our technology staff, Mrs. Hume, that we press star 6 to unmute. We'll just give it another minute.
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Could you, hi, could you address yourself by name?
Angie McCormick. Wondering if next week's school committee would have a date for the elementary schools? I know Mr. Bodwell had just said we're planning for March, and he was meeting with the schools this week. So I didn't know if on March 8, we would have a date for the elementary schools when they would be going back.
Thank you for your question. We do hope to have a date. I think we're waiting to see what information comes from the state with the vaccines. I think that will provide us a lot more information by then. And I think after we have our meeting tomorrow with our medical people, that'll also give the educators more information. And then we plan to at least have a discussion with the union leadership later this week. So there's a few things that are going to go on. So I won't promise a date, but I think we will be closer to getting a date next week because we'll have more information.
Great. Thank you.
Hello, Mrs. McCormick. Was that in response to your comment?
Yes, that was a great answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other participants who'd like to make a public comment?
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hi, how are you? This is Danielle Anderson. How are you? I just have a quick question. It's just about when you say there's 95 kids that have had, students that have had COVID, around 95. Does it tell you if those are the kids that go to school A, B, you know, Cohort A, Cohort B, or go Cohort C? Or can you tell us some of the kids that are full-time remote? Is that considered within the 95, too?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I wasn't.
Yeah, just like as a whole student, is it just considered every student, you know, or do you, can you break it up or no?
The 95 students is broken up above that. I can read them to you. The 6 students at the Spring Street School, 17 at Roselle, 16 at the Howard, and 56 at the middle, senior, high school. Is that what you were asking? I'm sorry, I had a tough time hearing everything.
No, sorry. I'm asking if they're remote students or are they students that come into school?
We don't. These are students who are in school. Now, sometimes they were in school, but they were not in school during that time. But they were at one point with us here in school.
Since September. Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think she also asked if it was Cohort A, B, or C, and we don't differentiate if it's Cohort A, B, or C.
We don't, no. So, yeah, we could probably go find that information.
No, no, no. I was just, I was just saying if the kids go to school.
In our spreadsheet, it's not broken out that way.
Is there anyone else that would like to join in the public comment section? All right. So we're going to continue with the meeting this time under the Business section and Mr. Bodwell for fiscal year '22 for the budget, please.
Thank you. And if there are other questions, I do get emails from parents once in a while asking questions. Please feel free to send me an email, and I'll get back to you as soon as I can with information. So we always want to try to answer the questions that parents may have or anyone in the community. When we look at building our budget, we look at our district mission. And I'll read it. So the mission of the West Bridgewater Public Schools is to work together with home and community to provide our students a safe environment in which to acquire the knowledge, skills, and values needed for success in a diverse and global society of the 21st century. A lot goes into building our budget, but what we don't ever lose sight of are our students and what we're doing for them to make them learners who will be successful in the future. In terms of priorities when building a budget, we want to make sure we're providing programming and opportunities for all students. We want to proactively address social, emotional, mental health, and academic needs of all of our students. And we want to support the continued growth for all of our educators and support staff in the district. One of the real positive things that I wanted to share with you, and I think it goes into a couple of things. Number one, it goes towards our school contribution and our funding is through school choice. But it also goes to the pride, I think we all have in the West Bridgewater Public Schools, that when we look at school choice numbers, kids want to come here, families want to send their children here. And I think we all take a lot of pride in that, and we should because everyone in the West Bridgewater School System has done their part to make it a great school system. And I just listed some of the applications over the past four years. And, you know, I think it's impressive that even though we're in a real difficult time, we had 155 applications this year for a variety of different grade levels. Now, we won't make any decisions on what grade levels are open yet. We wait until we gather more information. But I think it's a real positive statement on the West Bridgewater Public Schools that people feel that things are going well. So I want to thank everyone for their part that they play in that. Again, when we look to build the budget, there's a lot of different things that go into it, and they kind of go up and down like these arrows. We look at our district priorities. We look at school improvement plans and our NEOS plans. We look at the goals that I've established, administrator and educator goals, the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students, and increasing student achievement. And they all play into the budget in different ways. So none of them is really more important than the other, but they all play a piece in building this budget. And when we look at the budget again, some of the questions that we're asking ourselves, does the budget support our district mission? Does the budget support our district priorities? Does the proposed budget meet the ongoing academic, social, and emotional and mental health needs of all of our students? And is the budget fiscally responsible? Because we know that obviously has to play into it. In terms of financing, this is more of a general statement because it does vary year to year. But in terms of state funding, Chapter 70 funds average about 25% of our total budget. West Bridgewater itself contributes through tax revenues about 60%. And schools, the West Bridgewater School through school choice, grants, and revolving accounts provide about 15% of our budget. So it really is a collaboration of the state, the town, and the school working together to create this budget. And without the support of all three, we wouldn't be where we're at. And again, that goes back to having a strong budget that's supported by the community, makes people want to come here, and makes it a successful school system because honestly, we wouldn't have those 155 applicants for school choice, which brings in, you know, well over $1 million if the product was inferior. If the product is good, people want to come here to build a stronger program. Part of the Student Opportunity Act, which has shown an increase- Part of the Student Opportunity Act, which has shown an increase in chapter 70 this year, was passed by the state and signed by the governor in 2019. Overall, it infuses about $1.5 billion into school districts over the next seven years. This is the first year they're starting, although it was approved before. And it's aimed to close the opportunity gaps. And it's touted as a giant step towards correcting the inequities between wealthier and lower-income communities. But for West Bridgewater, it's not a huge windfall for us. We do get an increase, but it's not substantial because approximately 85% of the increased funds goes to about 35% of the districts. It is an increase, but it's not this tremendous increase that's going to put us over the top. I just want to go back and talk about some of the positive things that have happened this year. I think it's important to reflect on where we are. I think it's important to know that we maintain the hybrid learning model, except one small interruption with our pre-K and kindergarten students in mid-November. The best connections they can with our kids under the current circumstances. We have all our seniors back who want to attend, and I think that's a real positive thing. We've had cohort C students in four days a week, and we've done that since the beginning. And if kids are struggling, we're adding kids as often as soon as we can if we know they're struggling. Our athletics and our drama have not missed a beat because they've been participating in that since the beginning, which is awesome. And again, like a positive is we're working towards getting all of our kids back, hopefully this month. And again, looking at this year moving forward, we've since March of last year, many students have missed out on the in-person learning. We went from March, you know, mid-March through the end of the year, remote. As I said before, we have a majority of our students in person only about 40 days this year. So we need to focus on what are those academic learning gaps and how are we going to address them? What are we going to do to help close those gaps? And we need to look at the social and emotional well-being of our kids. Again, a huge priority for us. So what's the budget look like? Well, first, let's start with the funding for this year and next year. This year, we had the Plymouth County Cares money, which ends December 31st, 2021. So we've got a few more months of that. That was used and will continue to be used for PPE, technology, and staff, like our remote teachers. The SR1 funding of $67,000 has been used for funding demands for this year related to COVID-related expense. SR2 funding, which we'll apply for later on in the spring, early summer, about $248,000. I'm going to talk a little bit about that later. And that can be used through fiscal year '23 to address unknown expenses moving forward. And the federal government is moving towards passing another stimulus package, which should provide local communities with more money. That amount is to be determined, and we're hoping that's for fiscal year '22 and hopefully for '23. Selectmen has given a directive to all town departments to be level funded from the FY '21 budget. And that is so negotiated personal contracts, step-in track, but no COLA raises. They've asked not to be included. We'll talk about that in a minute. Things like service contracts, utilities, and transportation contracts are also part of what we're looking to put forward. And level funding is hard in schools because it's not as cut and dry as it may seem because we're operating with changes in enrollment, changes in student needs. A student may need one placement one day, and then something changes and they need a different placement. Students move in and out of schools, which could increase number of kids in programs. Students could move into certain grade levels, which would require an additional teacher. We could have, you know, there's many different things that could happen. So it's tough to predict all those things as we move forward. When we look at our FY '22 increase, and we'll share that with you in a moment, but we do have costs that exceed the level-funded budget. Those specifically are special education placements and service changes and the union COLA. We'll talk what that is and what that looks like. In terms of special education, again, every district must provide, in a least restricted environment, a free and appropriate education, or commonly known as FAP, to special education students from age 3 to 22. And individual education plans dictate the appropriate placements and services for each student. So that team gets together, they decide on a placement, and then the schools need to fund them. And again, the most unpredictable costs of special education are outside placements for students who needs cannot be met in a district. Part of what we're proposing for FY '22 is to build more capacity within our schools so we don't need to send kids out. We can keep kids, more kids in district. But kids have needs that exceed what we can do in the schools. So they may need to be sent out, or in this case, we had a student move in over the summer, which was at a huge expense, and we needed to pick up that tuition payment. Transportation also for these placements must be covered by the sending district. And again, we'll talk about what those transportation costs could look like. Currently, about 1.2% of our population is placed in an out-of-district placement. However, this represents approximately $2 million or 12% of the proposed FY '22 budget. So you can see how some of these expenses really can add up quickly. Circuit breaker, we'll talk about that when we look at the line items, how we get money through circuit breaker. It's available from the state to supplement local budgets, but tuition costs are above $45,000. However, the last several years, the reimbursement has not been fully funded by the state. So that's a concern. We'll budget amounts that's fiscally responsible. We won't budget probably the same amount as last year. We didn't because we weren't sure if we were going to get it. So we didn't want to over-budget. And the Student Opportunity Act expands circuit breaker funding to include transportation, but it does stay pending available funds. And again, just a little bit more on special education. Currently, we have 17 students in out-of-district placements, which fall into three different categories. Collaborative schools such as North River, Reed's, South Shore Collaborative, Southeast Collaborative, Pilgrim Area Collaborative. Those collaboratives range per year for tuition only between $55,000 and $80,000. Massachusetts Public Schools Special Education Programs, example like the East Bridgewater Public School Program we send students to, that can range from about $32,000 to $45,000. Categories are non-public, private, special education programs. Amigo, the New England Center for Children, Riverview School, Meeting Street School. And those tuitions can range anywhere from $65,000 to $350,000 per year. District placements is responsible, again, of our district. And the cost varies on the need of the student. For example, do they need a wheelchair van? And how far are they traveling? For this budget, we projected costs ranging per student from $12,000 to $80,000 for each individual student. And the cost is variable and can change with the needs of our students. For example, this year, they limited the number of students that could ride on vans. So we had to get additional buses in some cases. So there's a lot of variability and more so this year. We did a slide that shows from FY '14 to '22 where we're at with in-house services, tuition, and transportation. Basically, what I just want to show is this is not a new issue for school, and West Bridgewater is not alone. But you'll see the continual cost of the special education going up. A lot of things. But again, it's a, it's a lot. And these students have needs, and these needs need to be met, and they're in the placements that are right for them. Okay, but it's just acknowledging the fact that it does put a lot on the school budgets. Before we get into actually going through the line-by-line items, I just want to talk about a couple of requests that are not in the budget. You might be asking, why am I, you know, why am I talking about these items? Because I think we're putting forward a fiscally responsible budget that we're going to have some money from the federal government through our SR1, SR2, and the new stimulus package. So these are things that we feel, again, trying to be fiscally responsible on our own, that we can try to support for next year. A middle school learning center, special education teacher. We have learning center programs at our elementary schools. We're pushing hard to continue this program at the middle school. It's important to know that, you know, if we don't do this, we may lose students out of the district. ESL, English as a Second Language Teacher, we have an increased number of our students, and we need additional staff to cover the mandated needs. And the mental health professional, which we put forward last year and it was cut, is essential mostly at the middle, senior, high school, but could be used throughout the district. Again, there's a cost associated with each of these. In working on our budget, we feel that with the funds that we have available and future funds that we can support these. But I think, you know, there's a cost of not adding in these programs and positions in the future. Number one is we might not be in compliance with least restricted environment and FAP, the Free and Appropriate Education for our special education students. We might not be in compliance with our ELL students in the delivery of services. If students do go out, there could be a cost of anywhere from $40,000 to $80,000 per student per year. And basically, overall, the cost of not adding these programs in the future is much greater than the cost of the staff that we would need to fill those positions. And again, we were looking at funding ourselves for next year, the 248,000. We're looking at the new stimulus package as well, once we determine the amounts. A reminder, any grants that you use, though, 11% of any kind of funding will go towards retirement. That's mandated by the federal government, the state. And again, I say this now, and I'll say it to the finance committee and the selectmen when we meet with them. This is something we're going to need some help maintaining these positions in FY '23. Because anytime you use any kind of grant money to support staff, that money goes away. You either have to pay up to keep that staff there, or the staff have to go away. So present the reality of where we're moving in the future. This is just an overview of where we're at. And then we're going to go, I think the next slide is going, we'll soon go in line by line. But the amount that we're looking for over FY '21, so our FY '22 increase is $665,638, which is a 4.8% increase. You add in our school choice grants and revolving accounts, which again, equals about 15% of the budget. Our total budget we're looking at is $16,790,369. And we're going to break that down in a moment. Again, the increase is over FY '21, the level service budget. Our special education costs are going up about $182,000. And the negotiated raises by, for the teachers is about $202,000. So I think we're going to go through it line by line. And then the end, we're going to, after that, we're going to talk a little bit about where we were last year, where we are this year in terms of percentages and funding, and we'll answer any questions. So if we want to now continue on going through it line by line, Mrs. Grant and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
I think everyone that's here has the top copy, which, and again, this is Grant and I going to have to kind of go back and forth and muting one another so we don't have feedback. But I'm going to, I'm going to let her kind of explain the top copy of that.
Hi. The top copy, it summarizes each of our major categories in the budget. So this gives a really good perspective of how each category has either increased or decreased compared to the approved for us by the town in the previous year. The difference between the two budgets, the two budgeted items from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22, that difference does not include the school contribution. So that's something to keep in mind. We're focusing on what we're requesting from the town.
Again, when you look at it, you'll see again the 4.84% and the $665,638. And then the second column from the, on the bottom to the right is that school contribution amount. So the numbers in the presentation will match up with these numbers here on the top page. All right, so we're going to go line by line. If you have any questions or concerns, shout them out, let us know, and we'll stop. Otherwise, if there are none, we'll continue to move forward. The first line item is the school, school committee secretary position. Yeah. Any questions on that? All right. The next page is the superintendent's office. All right. The next.
I was just going to say, it looks like somebody chatted in the Google Meet. Is there a way we can display this? But you don't.
We don't. I don't think they, I don't think in the past they've ever done the, gone through the line items. This is for the school committee. Again, this is far as I know, the past practice of the school committee and the superintendent.
So maybe for the sake of people that don't have it in front of us, we can at least just talk about what we could call out, like the first thing that we talked about was that line at $10,300 last year to $10,450 this year. Is that too much information?
Feel free to share. I think that's showing, you know, 1% increase from one year to the next.
Right. And then I do have a question on the next page. It shows a zero increase for the, is that because of, we haven't discussed contractual? Sorry. No, I'm not muted.
Correct. There are no, our directive was no COLA increases this year. So there would be no COLA included for fiscal year '22 in any of the staff budgets, except for educators. Also, had there not been given, there's a contractor's benefits line later on where any budgeted raise included because at the time the budget is created and evaluated.
The next page is finance and legal. This has to do mostly with legal services. And again, you can just see, obviously, it lists the percent, the dollar difference, the percent difference, the school contribution, and the total. So again, shout out if there's questions or concerns. Next page is district technology.
And that's the fees for our service contract and Aspen and things like that, right?
Correct.
On that page, okay.
Yes, I mean, I mean, it's Aspen, Healthmaster, Comcast, hubs, specialists, all we, any concern, I think. Okay.
Hey, Mark.
Which of them bounced up by about, from 2019 to 2020? Was it across the board that we had that increase of by so much, or was that one particular service that we were doing that year?
From 1920?
Yes, I'd have to look into that for you. To be honest, it's an area we focus more on budget compared to the budget. Keeping in mind that current budget, we do look back to the action history of previous years to look at trends.
To make balance again? Like we're going up by 5,000 this year? Is that, is that one particular thing we think is going up, or that's just?
All of them increasing.
Mark, can you hear me?
Ray, who's on the line from, the selectman is asking if we could at least say the percentage increase as we go through the.
I don't want.
My only concern, I'm just saying percentage increases, you know, you may have a fifty-dollar increase on a five, you know, four-hundred-dollar budget, and then it's looking like an enormous increase.
What we can do is we can actually, well, for, just for an example, the increase on the district is a seven percent increase, but that's due to a five-thousand, five-thousand dollars increasing that line just because of the contractual obligations we need. So a seven percent increase is like a lot of dollar amounts, not tremendous, due to the fact that we've got a budget for all these technology companies that may raise their rates.
Yeah, so if we could just read out, like, the very first line, like, district technology, like what you just said, the district technology, we're asking to appropriate seventy-two thousand, which is a seven percent increase. Then we're looking at the details of that. If we have any questions or we can highlight that. Does that make sense? So then, do we want to just go back and say it's like one percent?
Sure. If it's easier just to go, we can say that the school committee secretary, and again, it says more things evolved. Secretary and expenses went from ten thousand three hundred dollars to ten thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. So a hundred and fifty-dollar increase, which equals one percent.
Yeah, Mark, can you hear me?
Numbers could be totally different within two weeks here when we see the selectman. Really doesn't make a lot of sense to be saying it's seven percent increase here or a one percent increase there, because the numbers could change.
And again, we're a bottom-line budget, so we're looking at the bottom line. So you may see increases here and there. We can certainly talk about them when you see them. As you look at that, again, this is your working business meeting to discuss it. Are we going to answer any questions? The principals line. This is on your list of page five. The next page is teaching services. Yes, hold on one second. I think Mr. Flynn's going to, I think he was muted previously, and he's going to make a statement, and then we can.
Sorry, Mr. Holden. I just wanted to make the statement that I made with, when I was muted. The budget that's presented tonight is presented to the school committee in the school committee alone. These are not the numbers that are going to go to the selectmen or the finance committee. They could very well be, but these numbers are presented to us. We have a chance to look them over and decide if this is what we want to move forward with. So by us actually saying it does an increase here or an increase there, or seven percent or one percent, really does not matter. Because until it goes to the selectmen or it goes to the finance committee, those are the final numbers. So the numbers tonight are just the numbers that are being presented for the school committee, so the five of us can make our decision on how to move forward with the budget. So.
So.
The number you're hearing, please don't, please don't take that as they could change within a week. So, so that's just all I'm trying to say.
Teaching services, I can address that. You know, I think a lot of them are for contractual raises. There are other things we've added in, extra money, long-term subs into the substitute line, due to the fact we feel there may be some people out next year. We added the nurse leader this year, so that adds to some of the stipend amount. But a majority of those, I believe, Mrs. Grant, are through contractual raises. Again, that's step track and COLA. When we're looking at that, it's a combination of all three of those.
So it looks like at three of our schools, there was an increase, but actually at the middle, senior, high school, there was a decrease. Was that because of retirements?
So a portion of it is definitely retirement. When teachers retire at the highest step, and then we hire a new teacher at the lower step, saving where from twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So this year, in total, we've had six retirements coming from fiscal year twenty-two. Three teachers, I believe, one at the middle, senior high. I can't remember which, third, I'm one, I'm one at spring. And then, and then with reconstruction assistance. Though Delta would, the position much less, but it still makes a difference in our budget.
And again, there's movement of students, actually movement of staff. We have five kindergartens, teachers this year. One of those teachers will be moving up to grade one. So that, so again, it will be transferring money that would be going towards the Spring Street School teachers. Now it's the Rosemount McDonald teachers. So again, there's a lot of, you know, fluctuation, not adding staff, just moving staff back and forth.
So when we mentioned that number at the beginning, that two hundred and two thousand for the teachers COLA, does that come out, that is reflected in this two-sixteen amount?
Correct.
That's, yeah, that's part of it, yeah. The next page is professor. Instructional supplies. I think it's important to point out here, and I think it is in the past, that we ask the principals to come with a level funded budget. So if they get fifty thousand for instructional supplies, and those include equipment and supplies and so forth, and textbooks, they can take that fifty thousand and one year maybe, you know, split up evenly. One year it might be forty thousand and five and five. So you're going to see fluctuation in the numbers. But when you look at the totals, and we can give you the totals, the total for instructional supplies, and that's taking a few different lines. It's taking lines three-two-two-oh, three-two-four-zero, and three-two-four-five. In fiscal year twenty-one, it was two hundred and thirty thousand and sixty dollars. In fiscal year twenty-two, it was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. So it's a net decrease of, I think, fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred dollars. But if you look at it, sometimes you'll see, wow, one went up nineteen percent, and the other one dropped fifteen percent, and this one changed here. So difficult to look at, because it's not the same. It's, it's a bottom-line budget, so they can spend that money however they want, but it may not always be year to year in the same line. So just to explain that, where you're maybe looking at.
We could take money out of there and make it look impressive by saying we did a twenty percent increase, decrease in that line, and it's only four thousand dollars.
Because they've stayed within that, that bottom line of all the money that they have to spend, and it's not a lot. I mean, our supply budget for our, you know, for our buildings is a small percentage of our overall budget.
Do you happen to know, and maybe this isn't the right quote for this question, but the fifteen thousand dollars for virtual classrooms, how many students or how many classes does that represent, students taking?
I believe the cost, three hundred dollars per course.
Okay. So quite a few. I can do the math. Thank you.
Instructional technology is the next line. That also falls into that same category of fluctuations year to year, but a bottom line that would be the same.
It's part of the principal.
Yes. Guidance in testing. Again, pretty much the same as I share, with just a small, you know, small increase. And that would have, that would be due to.
Oh, I love it. So if we were to add a counselor, for instance, would this be the, where it would fit under? Is this the page?
The program would be.
I believe it would be further, it would be more under the student services area, because we're speaking of the mental health counselor. Probably with the, either the psychologist or the student services area.
No, is that, is that because it's not schools?
It depends on where we put it. It could go into one of the actual building lines. So middle, senior, high school.
Okay.
Bottom line, it would increase X amount, say seventy thousand dollars. So, you know, we could put it probably, you know, in one of the teaching position lines. We know it would just increase the bottom line.
Okay.
And these are guidance counselors, so their duties are specifically that area versus a mental health counselor that would be more along the psychology services and student services.
Again, just to clarify the, in terms of step and track, COLA is a set amount, of two-point-two-five for this year. But step and track vary, so depending on someone goes down a step, the different steps have different amounts, or they go over. So it's not as, it's not as set as a percentage raise. So that's why sometimes these percentages are a little bit different, just because of the fact that they're, they're not calculated the same way. Under ESL services, I will say that this is an area, as I spoke of before, that this is for one-point-five teachers at this point. In the future, when we look to add, this is where we would hope to add it into this line to cover the needs of our students.
So what I'm looking at here, though, we are saying that we're going to increase it more than the five percent that we're asking for from the town, and the school is going to contribute. Am I reading that correctly?
So what you're going to say is that right amount of money comes from the federal government in the form of the ESSER grant, on the, the President Biden is discussing and trying to have. Then hopefully, then we'll be able to use some of that money to hire another teaching service for ESL program, because we're, so many schools require ESL. And due to the learning gaps in COVID, and so that money for that. Knowing that we would have to provide the town when the problems get out, if we still have the needs.
But this, what we're asking for here, the appropriation from the town of the one-twenty-three, and then.
Addition of the twenty. Our choice money that we've applied to that.
Okay, so that doesn't include what we need in addition. This is just what we actually need just to maintain where we were last year.
Taking one-five teachers.
And you'll see in those school contributions, there's different amounts listed there, and then some are through school choice. Some are grants, some are through revolving accounts. So we use that money to supplement. So we take that, you know, two-point-three million or whatever it is, and put that into the budget in different areas. It doesn't all go into one spot. It's divided out where it's needed. Under medical services. Again, this, this increases my, it's, you know, it's simply the contractual increases.
So I know I asked a couple of years, but why don't we fund sub nurses?
I think we have a difficult time finding them. I know we've looked this year for sub nurses. It's been very difficult. We, the nurses, do a really good job of covering one another when they're out. That, I mean, we certainly would want to have a person in there. But when they're usually not out that often, to get someone on call that's a certified nurse is sometimes difficult. So we, like, in this year, we tried to have a few, few people on call, and I think we even talked, we talked about raising and using CARES money to help pay for that. We couldn't find people. We really couldn't. I mean, their per diem rate was so much higher doing other stuff, it was tough to find them. But good question. All right, next is transportation. And this is Lucini, and money that's appropriated through McKinney-Vento, which is our transportation that we need to budget for homeless students and foster students, again mandated by the government.
And nothing's changed. We still have the six buses, right?
Correct.
The ones, you know, okay.
Next is student body activities, which comes with mostly athletics and some of our stipend positions.
And that school contribution is through the athletic user fees. Yeah.
And that covers the coaches and the trainer and that. Custodial services. I will point out here that under grounds and maintenance, the school department does continue to pay a halftime FTE for the DPW. That's, that's been longstanding, I believe, which is about thirty-three thousand dollars. Again, that's always preceded maybe all of us on the committee.
And we're the only department that pays that, correct?
Yes, as far as, oh, yeah, that's correct. Next line is heating. And again, with just some marginal increases for that. While we're hoping for a nice warm winter next year. Again, there's a decrease there, and I think Mrs. Grant looked at some of the historical data.
Yes, looking back at historical data, you know, we just felt that it would be prudent to move the budget line more in line with what we've been actually spending.
You don't think that savings had to do with the fact that we weren't in the building, do you?
I don't, because the differences between the budget, it's really a change between what we budgeted last year. But one thousand four hundred and forty-one thousand for fiscal year twenty would have only been a couple of months. And at, and at that point, we still, still had all the lights on. The building really can't be closed down in terms of those in heat and light, unfortunately. Obviously, spring does turn down a little bit. I would say we probably use a little less electricity, but nothing significant. And that's, and that's unfortunate.
So nothing significant then from March to June without the four cafeterias working, or three cafeterias? I mean, there wouldn't be an effect or a decrease there?
But electric rates went up at the same time. It really was, we were not able to point to it and say, well, this is incredible, we saw twenty percent decrease. I would have, I would have acted that. We still had custodial staff in the building, we still had some administrative staff. Obviously, we didn't have everything here lit and all the, although the cafeterias were going, they were handing out food. We were.
Right, right, that's right. I'm just thinking that they, I don't know, they weren't using the ovens. Everything was either frozen or, I don't know, yeah.
I think we're trying to look here, as we said, let's try to, you know, save a little bit here, try to get as quickly as possible, but it's, you know, it's a good point.
Yeah. Thank you.
Maintenance of grounds, again, a small increase due to a septic, social disposal. Maintenance of buildings, next page. And this is always a tricky line, because you're kind of guessing on what may need to be fixed or replaced. So it could be certainly variability one way or the other. Equipment maintenance. This increase has to do with some of the contracts, the fire alarm contract through Johnson Control, our elevator contract in Kenmark have gone up. Insurance is the same. Equipment acquisition, none, so that's easy, so. Equipment replacement is still at zero. So, um, we would look more towards the capital budget items for things like that. Tuition, and this has to do with our students going to Norfolk Aggie. We have budgeted for, and we do have one student graduating, we have two students who are applying, so we're kind of splitting the difference. It's a twenty four thousand, one hundred dollars per student. Unfortunately, Plymouth County does not have their own agricultural school. I know you've heard this before. If the in district students or in county students, I should say, we pay twenty four thousand, they pay twenty two hundred dollars a year. So that's just because Plymouth County doesn't have the agricultural school. It's, it's a big variable for us because if we got a number of kids that were accepted there, it's a lot of money. And the state has never really figured out that formula.
Yeah, so this budget represents five, last year was four, year before two, year before one.
Correct.
So it is, yeah, I see the incremental increase, obviously, but I also, um, I think it's a great opportunity for the kids in our town, especially since I think our town. Stay in our town, so I wish we had a page that would be fantastic, but it, you know, we can't, I don't see how we could ever make that change. Whether our county would want to change, I don't want to do anything to discourage any of our Westford water students from changing.
Right. And I think before those budgets were one less, then the student was admitted and went, so that, that, that's why there's a bigger increase. We're seeing for this, you know, the twenty five thousand due to that student being accepted after the budget was already approved, which again could happen issue. We may not get those, and there's a cost savings for us, so we're trying to get predicting one is, we hope.
Right.
Special, sped, special education administration, again, has to do with contractual increases. Special education teaching services. Again, this, this goes to, um, you know, the teachers that are needed. We did hire a couple of one on ones this year due to students' needs through an IP, the IP process. It's, um, this is really dependent on the needs of our kids. If there, if there are needs there, we need to meet those needs. And just to, you know, again, we may move staff around, staff could go from different buildings, they may follow kids. We may have additional staff needed, we may have, you know, retirements that we, we can look to fill at different levels. So there's a lot of variability, you know, similar to the regular teaching services, but even more so because kids may move in and we need to automatically say, okay, we need to hire people right now. Special education services. Where the increase partly had to do with when the budget was presented last year. We hired an adapted phys ed teacher that was not in the budget, but was paid for out of contractual services. The argument really was to build capacity with our school rather than going out and paying more money through an outside service. We now have someone in school at a reduced rate that can, that can provide that. ESY, our extended school year program, uh, more money has been put into that for this coming summer due to the learning gaps that were addressed earlier. So we feel a definite need to increase that amount. And again, that's where, when you see the hundred and twenty four thousand on the school contribution, that's some of the circuit breaker money that we get back from the state. And we're applying it directly back into special education. And there's also contractual obligations. Special education, um, psychological services. Again, there's a, there's an increase here, has to do with contractual obligations, but also for testing. There was an increase in, we felt that it was prudent to increase the texting, the texting, excuse me, the testing line for us students. And special education transportation. Again, the increases, again, as discussed earlier, that we just don't have control over. We do the best we can in terms of trying to find transportation that is the most effective, but also the most cost effective for our students. But sometimes it's, it's difficult and you have to provide the appropriate transportation for them. So that's what we're going to see an increase. And special education equipment acquisition, we had none. And the same for special education equipment replacement, none. Out of, out of district tuition, special ed. We did have an increase there, again, the fluctuation of the number of kids in the placements. We did apply forty grand to three hundred thousand to this as a way to, again, taking the school contributions and applying them to our budget along with some more of the circuit breaker money.
Can I just ask a quick question? So is this line item number thirty nine ten, is that a new way that you pulled it out of the budget under the general sped category? Because I don't remember that last year being pulled out like this, is it new or?
It's not, it's not.
A different presentation matter, I know the item itself isn't new, I understand that.
No, no, same presentation, same line.
I don't know what you know what's in last year. It's, it's, we've always did it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Again, this is one you'll see fluctuate year to year if you look back. It's very hard to gauge that with kids moving in and moving out and programs changing.
So this is, this thirty nine ten represents our seventeen students that we currently have out of district.
Yeah, yes. I'm sorry, I was like thirty nine ten, the line item, yes.
Sorry.
So those, again, those are the line items that, that add up to our overall budget numbers. And again, I, so the, the next slide is going to just, is a quick look back to last year. Last year, uh, presented budget of an increase of seven hundred and twenty four thousand, nine hundred and forty four dollars or a five point five percent increase. The special ed increases were about two hundred and sixty six thousand, the remainder of the budget was about four hundred and fifty eight thousand. And then the town approved a percent, a five percent increase of about, of a six hundred and fifty four thousand, nine hundred and forty four dollars. So I just thought it was important to give a look back as to where we were last year. And what we're looking for for this year is an increase of six hundred and sixty five thousand, six hundred and thirty eight dollars, which is a four point eight percent increase. Our special ed out of district placements are increasing at about a hundred and eighty two thousand, which is a one point three percent of our overall budget. And a remainder of the budget, which consists of step and track, um, COLA and other, uh, other things that have gone up equals four hundred and eighty three thousand dollars, seventy eight dollars, which is three point five percent. Again, we felt that, you know, that this was fiscally responsible. We wanted to come in at a number that we felt we would, could take off or we could through our process, but really to meet the needs of our kids. We felt it was important to be at this number. We know, and as I stated earlier, that there are some things that we need to add, but I wasn't ready to put that in addition to the four point eight percent we're asking because we truly feel that we can support that on our own. I think for a, a school budget to support fifteen percent of their own budget through, um, school choice, you know, the revolving accounts and grants. We feel that coming, this coming year, we can use that extra money to support it. Clear that this is something we can't support in the long term. So. That's the budget. And I'm just asking to support it if you will.
Thank you, does any, anyone in the audience have any particular?
I just want to thank Mr. Bodwell and Mrs. Grant for, uh, the work that went into this. Obviously, we'll take a look at it and see changes or anything before we present to the finance committee and the, um, so, but there's an awful lot of hard work in here. Go, I mean, this is, you know, close to one half of the full town budget. Stuff that needs to be looked at and taken into consideration. I think Mr. Bodwell and Mrs. Grant did a fantastic job of laying stuff out for us to take a look at, so thank you.
Very welcome, thank you. And again, if, I know we have members of finance committee and selectmen either here in person or virtually. If they've got questions after we've, you know, the school committee has this piece, we'd love to sit and talk with you. It's, it's literally an open book that we want to, you know, we want to work with the town to, again, provide the best education we can for our kids.
Thank you, and, um, under the chat section. Illustrator, uh, Mr. David Gagny did have his hand raised, so Mr. Gagny, uh, this is the public comment section. And again, any specific, um, we would ask that, again, uh, as Mr. Flynn had stated, this is really for the school committee presentation, for us to be presented with the budget and then to analyze that this is not the final presentation. So you did have your hand raised in the chat, Mr. Gagny?
Yeah, thanks, Sue. I was only asked, I raised it at the very beginning because hoping that you guys could put the budget up on the screen. That's, I recognize at this point what the process is on your committee. But when you were rattling off a whole bunch of numbers, I, I had asked for a copy of the budget earlier in the day, so I had it, but I know others didn't. I was trying to get your attention to say, that might make it easier if somebody just displayed it, do it at that point.
All right, all right, thank you, David. We appreciate that and that is helpful information, I think, next time, next time, uh, that we can all be here in person. But we're all trying to navigate this for our first time as well, so thank you. And also under the chat section, um, our select woman Denise Raze stated she has some questions. I would also like to remind you that our formal presentation to the select board, the select women and men board. So if you'd like to ask a question, this is the public comment section. So please go ahead.
So it's more of a general question, I did have a copy of your budget, I didn't receive it until later during the presentation. I, I'm just wondering if, is there a reason why you don't put what's been spent year to date? Because some of the increases look small to fiscal year twenty one, but then when you compare it to actual fiscal year nineteen, it's more significant. You also showed a year to date spend.
Um, it's great.
Historically, we have not shown the year to date spent because when we begin working on the budget, that would involve putting in a year to date number probably around the fifteenth of December. And that really represents such a short portion of our school spending year, um, that it, it would be more misleading than beneficial.
Yeah, this, this question comes up every year in the budget, that comes up from the finance committee. I know, um, Mr. Holden, uh, has addressed this in the past, um, but this, this, this comes up every single year and we just don't have the ability to do that at this time, that the budget is so large, the money is coming in, going out, and we just don't have the ability to, to, to support that.
Well, on some of the line, I can understand on some of the line items where there might be deferred costs. I mean, until closer to the end of the fiscal year, but there are some line items that are pretty consistently monthly bills, such as utilities. Uh, I think your insurances, you might allocate monthly. But it is what it is, it, it just makes it more difficult to look at.
Thank you, Ms. Raze. The public comment portion with respect to the FY twenty two budget. Fans wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment section. Understanding is to unmute yourself, you press star six. Automatic muted status.
I've got the speaker up, but I'm not hearing anybody, maybe I'll just give them another minute.
Okay, I'm going to, at this time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I just say one, one thing, Mrs. Sullivan? I just wanted to, um, personally just state that, um, I was pleased that you did put in, um, for the budget over the level service to have a mental health professional. I mean, I think we know that kids are resilient, but the effects of the pandemic are going to be unknown and, um, so I think I just wanted to stress the importance that I feel that we somehow be able to get that in there for, um, for our students.
Thank you, Ms. June, I think that is, is definitely the goal to, to fill those gaps. And those gaps are, as we've said before, they're academic, but they're also social, emotional and the mental health. So those, those add-ons are things that we're looking to, to certainly do for our kids.
Our next school committee meeting, our regular school committee meeting will be Monday, um, March eighth, twenty twenty one at six thirty here in the Learning Commons. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move second, any discussion and all in favor? Hi. Thank you. Good night.